Good evening and welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting of February 20th, 2018. First up is a salute to the flag.
(inaudible)
Do we have an approval of the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
All in favor? I'd like to call for an approval of the minutes of February 13th and February 6th.
Make a motion to approve February 6th and February 13th minutes.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Department head, committee chair updates. We have the Marijuana Committee here tonight.
Most of us do. I think they have a majority.
Yeah?
Do you want us to?
Uh, yeah.
That's what we're supposed to be doing tonight.
No, I'm not sure either.
My name's Richard Nass. I'm the Chair of the Committee. So, we're hoping you had questions, number two. I can start out this with a kind of an update of what's happened in the last couple of weeks in the Legislature if you want.
Sure, why don't you update?
It's a disappointing report.
Yeah, I know.
Nothing is the answer. So, there is still enthusiasm for doing some kind of statewide regulation. Couple of weeks ago, an attempt to extend the moratorium failed. So, the statewide moratorium has expired. And it does not look like there's any interest in passing an extended moratorium. That was kind of one of our things we thought was going to happen. It did not happen. What's instead in its place now is this theory that if the state doesn't pass any regulation, you cannot sell marijuana based on the referendum that passed. To me, that's a little disturbing because that implies somebody's going to be around to enforce this thing. And that's one of the things we don't have much of is enforcement, in my opinion. I'm giving my own opinion of this now. This is not the Committee's opinion. So, there is still enthusiasm for a statewide regulatory scheme. In fact, in this morning's radio announcement, there was one, apparently the Committee just reduced the number of plants that they're going to allow somebody to grow. And there was some commentary about that, mostly negative. And so, but from the people who are on the Committee, one who I've been talking to, Don Marine, who's a State Rep. from Hollis, who's the Republican lead on the Committee, still seems enthusiastic, thinks that there's going to be something. Hardly anybody else up there thinks it's going to pass anything. The Governor apparently has been conversing with them, but nobody's quite sure where he, what he, where he's going to be. So, I expect we'll see something come out in the next week or so. I don't know what's going to be in it. So, that leaves us a big unknown at this point.
So, the Committee's still together to produce a bill?
This, the Joint Select Committee on Marijuana, yes, is still together, still meeting. Looks like they'll produce something.
Okay.
The likelihood is it would pass the Senate and pass the House, but not with enough to withstand a veto. That's my projection. I've been wrong on a lot of things lately, so, anyway. So, that's kind of where we're at. We'll be willing to answer any questions in our, in the near future on this. I don't know what else, how else do you want to proceed?
Well, in my, my opinion of reading through, first, the easy stuff to read.
Report for 20 pages.
Yes, the easy.
And then, going through most of the ordinances, examples from the states out west.
Yep.
I've, I've decided, I don't know if the Board wants to do it, but it makes sense, wouldn't it, to, instead of going into writing ordinances to decide, to help, have the town decide which of the five licenses they would or wouldn't like to see in town before we started? Because they, some of them seemed specific to the type of license.
That's part of the majority report. There's a little difference here on this.
Okay.
So, I'll speak for that. Basically, the majority is saying, get the voters to vote on a ban. I mean, you kind of have to do it this way, anyway, to figure out what the voters want. You can't ask them to vote on five or six different things, some of which may be conflicting if, depending on the outcome of the vote. So, our recommendation was to vote on a ban. If that passes, that's where you're at for a while. If it doesn't pass, then go back and ask them to vote on the various categories: retail sales, cultivation.
Why, why wouldn't we ask them now to do that so that we could at least get a feel of, okay, what the people in the town want, okay? Those five licenses. And then, say they pick three. Just, just say they pick three, so that we could get working on what they want in this town, I guess.
Because if the people want a ban, means no commercial activity.
Then they won't choose any of the five options on the ballot.
Right.
Well, what if they do, though? What if you have some?
And that means they don't want to be asked.
That means they won't, I mean, they're telling us what they want.
Right.
I don't see how you can do anything except organize it with a ban first, and then, if that does not pass, because anything else is going to be conflicting.
Why couldn't we just keep the moratorium?
You can do whatever you want. You're the Selectmen, so.
Well, I just, you know, because we just got something from the State about where we don't have the laws and maybe, you know, just sticking with the moratorium so that we can get working on what our town, you know, what our town wants.
Sure, yep.
And law-wise, what was it saying? I guess, just legally, for, you know, so we don't get caught up, keeping the moratorium. I mean, it's not saying we need to do a ban, so I guess that's...
Yeah, you can extend the moratorium. The minority report recommends extending the moratorium. Now, last time we talked about our moratorium, the Acton's moratorium, there seemed to be a lot of concern about the extension. You know, we were doing 180 days. People were really concerned about, you know, multiple extensions. And certainly, two times around is pretty well established. A lot of towns have done that on other issues. So, twice around is fine. And start going beyond that, and that would take us to next November, right? Next November, the new Legislature and new Governor are not in place. So, if something doesn't happen by April, you're not likely to see anything by November that's any different. Now, maybe something will pass now, but it's not likely that you're going to have anything by November, which is the second extension of 180-day moratorium. But that is fine. The minority is recommending extending the moratorium. You could, you know, consider going with a second round and then, and don't forget, you're going to do this on your own initiative. This is the Selectmen extending the moratorium, unless you decide to put it out to the voters.
Right.
Which you could do. You could do a third round, take you beyond that. Maybe, I don't know how, if somebody wants to argue with you about that, you might end up in court. Maybe not, probably not. So, those are the options. For myself, I'm, I think that if you put a ban up, it's going to pass. That puts us in the same place that Chapley is in now. It was, it's not going to require this Committee or you to do much as far as ordinance work is going to go. That ordinance and that relatively simple thing is out there. There's examples of that. Chapley has got one, there are others. So, that's fairly easy. In the meantime, the State gets its Act together. Even with a ban, if it should pass, a year from now, two years from now, whenever things begin to sort itself out and looks like we should do something different, we can do something different. On your own initiative, whoever the Selectmen are, by petition, a group of people can get together and petition the Selectmen, you get it on the, up for a vote. So, there are other options for people to do that. But I don't see how you can, to me, it's getting, if you're asking people to, do they want retail sales, cultivation, testing, the options, the five options that are out there, one of which is pretty much gone. That's the social clubs is pretty much off, off the chart right this point. So, the other four options, so you're asking people if they want those. And if, so, so two or three of them pass, yes, they want those, now what effect does a ban have, then, after that? Seems to me like you've got to ask them that question first. If that does not pass, then, then you can go, then offer them the options. Well, what do you want, then?
It would almost be, if you were to do the ban, it would be similar to the town having to then opt-in.
Yes, don't forget, we're still in the opt-in situation. Now, we have to, no, we're in, we're in opt-out mode right now.
We're in opt-out right now.
Because the opt-in hasn't passed. Our only option is to opt out.
But with the LD, can't remember the exact number that they tried to pass last fall, it was you had to opt-in. They tried to set it up so that it was banned unless the town wanted to opt-in.
That probably, I haven't, that'll probably come back in this, whatever version gets up before the Legislature, before they leave in, in April or so. It'll probably still be there. Nobody seems to be interested in taking that out. So, opt-in versus out-up, opt-out is still on the table. Would make it easier for Acton. You wouldn't have to pass a ban because unless you, then you're back to your option, asking which do you want. But that's not in front of us right now.
Do you know off the top of your head, the expiration date of the moratorium?
Late May. I had the exact date, May 23rd or 28th?
No, I just, I was just counting. I believe it's May 28th.
28th, okay.
So, it's going to be close to...
So, six months takes you to late October, or late November, on the second round. But that doesn't get you to a new Legislature or a new Governor.
Yeah, to me, it makes sense to extend what we have in place and ask, do you want a ban? That, to me, makes the most sense.
Yeah, I don't know if you even have to extend the 180 days if you want to go ask the voters if they want a ban, unless you're going to do that at town...
Well, you'd have to do it at town meetings.
Okay.
You know, so, basically, we're only talking a few weeks.
I think it would be a secret ballot?
I would do, I would do it at secret ballot, yes.
Yeah, so then, couldn't we do that soon?
So, which is still in June, right?
No, I mean, you could have a secret ballot before then if you wanted.
If you didn't want a different, a special election, then you could...
Yeah, I don't think I'd do a special election. I think I'd do it right along with that regular election, so...
Oh, you'd do it with the June 12th.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is there time to get that on? I think there is, isn't there?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, and just, I mean, we had said in the very beginning that we didn't want to extend it unless we weren't fully ready. We're not fully ready, but we're ready to ask a question.
Yeah, I think so.
A lot of information has come out. We've got, you know, you folks have done all your gathering, and we, we've pretty much taken that as far as it can go. So, I think now it's time for the vote, and I think we would have to do, we would have to do the, the extension. I'm not in favor of two extensions. I think if we can't do it in one, that should be it.
Right.
You ask the question. If it comes back and folks say, no, we don't want a ban, then we get together on the rest of it, and, you know, by fall, we're ready.
And I, and the other thing that comes up is the zoning question. What are we going to accomplish? And again, I'm speaking for myself here because there are vast differences about this. There are folks on the Committee that think that zoning would be a solution for us. I don't think it will ever be a solution to us because we don't have the backbone of zoning that's going to make it work. I mean, ever since I've been coming to these meetings for the past few months, there's a few people here that are complaining about our code officer every week. And you think if you give the code officer or our part-time deputy the job of zoning for marijuana establishments, that is, that's going to be more difficult. That's not going to result in a happy situation, so...
Yep.
Okay, that's just me talking. There may be others that...
So, I mean, that's, that's where I think we're at, so...
Will you entertain other folks on the Committee you want?
Yes.
Okay.
Because I do have another question.
Sure.
Because there was a section in here on ordinances for personal growth, I believe. I thought I saw something as far as...
It was a section, sorry. So, Jerry Nolton, it was a section of one of the counties, their zoning requirements. It was part of their commercial zoning as well. They addressed personal. There was also a section in there on medical. The one thing that we heard from one of the towns, and the name doesn't come to me at the moment, but...
Close to the mic, please.
One of the, I'm not sure which town it was, but basically, they had said that they wanted to zone personal growth because this, there was lobbying being done in Colorado, I believe it was, to move it from six plants, six adult plants to 32 adult plants. And they wanted to keep it at the state minimums. You know, so what they set up was, you know, these requirements of minimum grows or maximum grows, and they said whichever is lower, the state or the towns. And they were going by that. But again, you get back to the same thing from a zoning perspective. There was the one Colorado county where one of the sheriffs came, you know, was talking about the 300 illegal grows. What he was referring to there were people who started growing for themselves, and he said, you know, unless it's DUI, it's not the weed, it's the greed. People start growing six plants, they realize how easy it is, they start growing 12 and giving it to friends. They start growing 24 and selling it to friends' friends. They start growing 100, and now you've got a problem, right? Now, that was 300 illegal grows in one county, small county in Colorado. But whether you do that or not do that, that's, that's irrelevant because I think you come back to the same code issue, so...
Right.
I'll throw out my one question to you. The research we did, I think, has value to other towns nearby. We have it electronically. Are you okay with us sharing that with others?
I am.
Yes.
Okay, so that, we would expect that to be available on the town's site, then? You have other stuff that's up there, right?
Do you want me to put it on the town's website?
Both the report and the, and the, all the background information.
Yes, the background.
Can it electronically be available to anybody that wants to look at it?
Should be there for the townsfolk, anyway.
I'm sorry?
Should be there for our townsfolk, anyway.
Yeah, so they can read through all of this.
Mike McCrum, minority member of the Committee. The only difference, really, between us and the majority when it came time to figure out what we were going to do, you know, as far as what we recommended the town to do at first, was they were trying to insist on a vote within the Committee. And we wanted to get, we just figured it wasn't going to do us any good to have this, waste all this time voting. So, we came up with the plan, let's tell the town to do the ban first, vote on that first, and then proceed to, if needed, go to the others. So, in that regard, they, they did agree with us with that part. Where we differed was, was, was the fact that they have nothing after the votes. They, they make no recommendations for after the votes. Minority Committee is recommending that you still proceed with some kind of common sense, making up some laws, even if you just print up somebody's verbatim and put it in the books, so that you have something in place because we don't know what's going to happen at the state level down the road. Even if you do a ban, that, you shouldn't stop thinking about what might end up being forced down Acton's throat. So, we recommended that you still continue to come up with some kind of ordinance system that would make sense. My second point is, is that the minority, they talk about Committee members who thought the code, you know, some kind of zoning ordinance was going to be the end-all and be-all to solve this problem. We never said that. We think that that is part of what you do, but the other rest of it is, you know, we come up with different ways to make it happen. But it also is, comes down to, what is Acton going to, is Acton going to reasonably even think about if, let's say they pass it, say we want to have a retail, we want to have retail operations, or we want to have outdoor grow in town? Then, is, is, is Acton going to reasonably have, just open the gates and go, hey, hi, everybody can set up shop? Minority, we recommended that you set up with one, you know, one retail grow to start, one retail outlet to start. And as far as being a code enforcement nightmare, that is, how is that a code enforcement nightmare? You've got some test subjects to work on, and if you don't like this, the results, then you don't have to, you know, open up any more options down the road. I mean, it's just because you open one, doesn't mean you got to open 20. Okay, that's, that's where we're...
Thank you. Thank you.
It's a long report, so I think, Mike, you might have missed it, but the majority did recommend the ban. But having said that, starting in section, bottom of page 15, Majority Recommendations of a Vote to Ban Commercial Operation Fails. We did make some very specific recommendations regarding each of the six licenses. And with respect to what Richard said on social clubs, I would just say to you that while the Legislature's talking about kicking that can down the road, if they do nothing, I could see somebody taking the state to court because the Citizens Initiative was passed. I have a feeling if they don't do something and the Governor doesn't sign it, you'll see a lawsuit that takes the state to court over the Citizens Initiative, and that will become the law of the land without enforcement, without funding. And I think one of the things that Richard looked at was with one of the, whether it was Senator or Representative on the Marijuana Committee, he asked the question, you know, if somebody were to start selling retail in the state of Maine today, what would happen? And the answer was a big, A, I don't know, and B, it would probably be a civil penalty, not a criminal penalty, since it's legal but not regulated. So, you can see this starting. I saw something that, in Massachusetts, where, again, they're, they're kind of in the same boat we are, trying to come up with the regulations. There's a company right now that's selling juice delivery to your house for $50, and with it comes a complimentary joint, right? There's no way to stop that. It's a complimentary gift, right? Under the legislation stands today, if somebody wanted to start doing that, we couldn't stop them. So, I do think the town needs to vote pretty quickly on a ban. I'm not particularly interested in working on zoning. You've seen the complexity of it. But if the town decides that they, you know, they want to do this, we've made recommendations on what you need to include. If the zoning Committee wants to take this up based on a ban not passing, I'd be happy to advise them. I'm sure Mike and others would as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
So...
You want to take, we can think about it? Or do you want to come up with a plan?
I think we should put, put it on the June 12th vote ballot.
Yep.
To ban.
Yep, I agree. I think along with that, we do need to extend the...
So, how exactly will the question be worded?
Well, I think we should work on that.
Okay.
Okay. Because, yeah, we want to make sure that...
Get that proper.
Covers, covers all that's needed to be covered.
And I think the wording to that needs to start off with the fact that this has no impact on what you do in your own home, kind of thing? That this is commercial operations only, not medical, not recreational, in your, you know, your own grows? Because I don't want people to be confused as to what they're, they're voting on.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Yeah, there's going to be some wording out there, and have our attorney work on it as well.
Yep.
I also agree that it should be a secret ballot, so...
And you want this on the June 12th Selectmen's Race?
We have to extend the moratorium as well.
Yeah, we're going to extend the moratorium.
All right, I'll work on bringing some samples back to you for next week.
Okay.
Okay. Old, are there any other Committee Chair updates while I'm here, your departments? Old Business Bill of Sale Title, are we able to find it?
Yes.
Yay!
So, last week, you sold the 2005 Ford 450 ambulance, so, Bill of Sale is drafted, just like all of the other ones, the Attorney's drafted. Now, this is the title. I've marked two X's. I just chose, it's only room for two signatures, so, I said you already put Ed and Elise, so all you need to do is sign by the X.
But not in red?
Uh, the back of the title doesn't matter. But the Bill of Sale, all three of you will sign, please. And he did come in right after the meeting on Tuesday, did pay the cash price of $35.27.13 that you awarded.
Okay, we don't have to vote on this since we did it last week.
No, I mean, you sold it last week. I just need signatures.
Joint Workshop Between the Board of Selectmen and Warrant and Finance.
So, that's scheduled for March 17th. Ed asked me to put that on the agenda, discuss a possible rescheduling of it.
Yeah, I've got a conflict that's come up that I can't be here that date for. It's actually got to do with my work, which we'd scheduled, I think, this prior to me getting the job that I have now, so... Can we bump that out a week or two?
I'm okay with the 24th.
I'm fine with that, too.
So, I'm going to notify Warrant and Finance the 24th, and then, we haven't set a schedule yet for the Department Heads. You want to do that in 20-minute increments like you have in the past? Do you want it longer, shorter?
The 20 minutes has always worked pretty well, hasn't it?
Yep, let's do that.
I mean, some do go a little bit longer and some go a lot shorter, so, yep.
So, 24th, okay.
New Business Stove.
So, we know that one of the things that the insurance company has, one of the last things we haven't dealt with with the insurance company is a stove in the kitchen. It's an extremely old gas stove. It has to be lit in ways that it's not safe to be lit. We've actually had individuals lose their eyebrows trying to light that. It's, it's just a huge fire hazard and it needs to go. So, and the price of a new stove, we have it in the budget under our building, building maintenance, building equipment. You know, we're looking to replace it with just a regular residential stove. The Town Hall doesn't really need a commercial-sized stove, you know, other than the Lions Club doing some cooking, and I know the Republicans or Democrats generally have a turkey dinner, but just like our ovens at home, a turkey will fit in that. It's nothing, you know, so we're looking at, you know, between $500 and $700 for, for a gas stove. We originally looked at electric, but the switchover would be more expensive. The Fire Chief also said that that would buy us time with the vent, if we at least can get the safety functions which all gas stoves come with now. So, it's, it's pretty much a, again, I mean, we talked about it last year, and the money's in the budget. The big question for the public is, does anybody know where that stove came from? So, I did speak to Lorraine yet and about it about six months ago, because she's always my first source for information, because we do not want to get rid of a stove that might have meant something to somebody without giving them first, first refusal. So, she didn't have any idea where it came from, so we're just going to kind of put it out there, let the, let the meeting run a week or two and see if we get any, any hits on it at all. Other than that, it'll be at your discretion. I mean, it is at your discretion what you want to do with it, but if it came from someone's grandmother's brother's sister, I'd kind of like to know.
Yep.
So, but you're okay with the gas purchase, we had already, the stove purchase, we had already talked about that.
Yep.
Yeah, it's a necessity.
Just need to find out where maybe that came from, and, you know, if not, I mean, Central says they'll take it for a fee, but, and I don't think the price of scrap metal is really worth anything these days.
I don't think they charge an awful lot anywhere to take them away, so...
So, if anybody thinks they want the stove or knows anything about it, let me know over the next few days, please.
Hey, Policy Governing Access to Public Records.
So, Freedom of Information has been updated some. This policy comes from the town's General Attorney, Burke and Clegg. He made some minor changes. The old one's still on the website, so you can compare if you wanted. Just hoping you'll take that home for next week.
Okay.
But these are his, his proposed changes. The staff didn't make any changes to this. It's all based on Maine State Statute.
Okay, a Butter Notice?
So, the Town of Chapley Planning Board sent you an a Butter's Notice, certified mail. So, I thought you might want to read it aloud. The town must own property next to something going on there, over there.
Do you want to read it?
Sure, if I can see it, I'll read it. All right. Dear Butter, the Chapley Planning Board has received an application for a three-lot subdivision to be known as Hidden Cove. The property is located at Tax Map 9, Part of a Lot 1A, Apple Road and West Shore Drive. Joseph Stanley of Lime Pro Land Surveying, applicant. James Chadbourne, property owner. Our records indicate that you own property within 500 feet of this above parcel. In accordance with Title 30 AM RSA, Number 4403, Sub. Number 3, the Planning Board is required to notify you it has received this application. You, as the Butter, are invited to submit your comments concerning this application to the Planning Board. The next scheduled Planning Board meeting to review this application is Tuesday, February 27th, at 6:30 at the Chapley Town Hall. Prior to the meeting will be a public hearing beginning at 6:00 PM that you are invited to attend. Any questions you may have can be brought to the attention of the Planning Board, either in person or in writing during this scheduled meeting. You may also mail correspondence to the Land Use Secretary prior to the meeting. This application is available to you to review at the Chapley Town Hall during regular office hours, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday, 9:00 AM through 4:00 PM. Sincerely, Roger Alair, Planning Board Chairman.
Do you know what we own for property over there?
I knew you were going to ask that. So, I'm going to guess...
West Shore Drive.
Yeah, let me just pull up our maps.
It must be at the end of it.
It's got to be at the very end, let's see.
Three-lot subdivision.
It'd be right at the end of West Shore.
Yeah.
My, I'm not getting much of a signal in here. We can look after the meeting if you'd like. So, it's next Tuesday, nevertheless, and if one of you want to plan ongoing, or if you have any concerns, you want to pass along.
You said Tuesday?
It said next Tuesday at 6:00.
You have a meeting, right?
I do, yeah.
My, I'm not getting much of a signal in here. We can look after the meeting if you'd like. So it's next Tuesday nevertheless. And if one of you want to plan on going or if you have any concerns, you want to pass along.
I can't go.
You said Tuesday?
It said next Tuesday at 6:00.
You have a meeting, right?
I do, yeah.
I think I, I was going to say, I think I can go. I'll keep a letter.
So I'll email, I'll pull it up on the map, email it to you and show you the surroundings.
Quit Claim Deed.
So last week, we wrote a letter regarding a right to redemption, the property that we foreclosed on, that we couldn't find anybody, couldn't find anybody. We own the property, we send the right to redemption, the heirs came forward. So this is a quit claim deed. They have paid exactly what the town required. They said they've paid the 15-year, 16-year, 17, 18-year, and the administrative fee. So this is a quit claim deed, selling it back to the property owner. Now, in this case, the property owner is deceased. I did double-check with Lenkowski and it's worded the estate of specifically per his instruction. Because remember, we have a warrant article that clearly says in time of foreclosure, you can only sell it back to the person that owned it. So just still going back to the estate of Mrs. Jane Doe, we'll call her. And it's up to the courts to work out.
Do you have a motion to sign the-
Make a motion. We sign the quit claim deed.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
And if somebody from the audience can just, I need a witness in addition to the notary. So if someone can just watch them signing it and hang out for a second afterwards and sign as the witness. As the notary, you guys all understand what you're signing?
Yes.
You're signing it under your own free will?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Public Comment. Seeing none, I'll move on to the announcements. Cheering for Charlie is this Friday. That date's not right, it's the 23rd.
It wasn't right last week either.
Four to seven, right?
Four to seven. There are four different sauces, lots of spaghetti, lots of desserts. 50/50 salads, breads, whole nine yards. Please come. Got a close-up, Eric?
Where is it?
It's-
Here.
It's here at the town hall. Yeah, from four to seven.
And how much was it?
Actually, Lois, it's, it's funny you ask this. And I, and I didn't make this up, just so you know. So adults are $8, children a five, 100% goes to the family. But Lois, after your question two weeks ago, God's honest truth, an individual came in and left cash for Lois Missut's entrance fee. I'm kidding. You're commenting in the background about how much it was going to be and we were talking, talking about it being a fundraiser.
I'm still not going to make it due to a certainty of-
Okay, well, I will offer said gentleman his money back, but he wanted to make sure Lois got in for free.
I've got a feeling I can do it.
So $8 and $5, all you can eat. Goes to a good cause.
On February 24th, the Republican Caucus is in, at the Bedford Middle School at 1:00 PM.
Please check your registrations before you go.
March 1st, the planning board has a public hearing for subdivision regulations. I'm assuming that's 7:00 PM.
Yep, and that's the rescheduled one that had to be canceled the night that Mr. Paul's mother passed.
Oh, yeah, okay. So Proposed Amendment to Subdivision Regulations As Revised, Revised and Adopted by the Planning Board on September 20th, 2007. It's at 7:00 PM on Thursday, March 1st. On, I believe this is a Sunday, March 4th, the Democratic Caucus at the Acton Town Hall at 3:30 or 4:00?
We posted as 3:30. No, because the registrar, I have to be here from 3:30 to 4:00 to accept party changes and enrollment. So they like to advertise it for that half hour prior. The same is true with the Republicans. If you need to change parties, try to be there in the beginning.
And there's pre-registrations online?
That's what I've been told.
Uh, March 15th, Blood Drive for the Fire Rescue, 12:30 to 5:30. Nice little, sometimes, yeah, okay. Yeah, this, sorry, I'm losing my voice. That's at the Acton Fire Rescue Building on 109. Upcoming meetings, February 22nd, Cemetery Meeting, the cemetery meets at 5:00. On the same night, the RUC Committee is meeting at 7:00. And on the 27th of February, the Board of Selectmen meet at 5:00. That is all. Anything else?
I have nothing else.
You have anything else?
Nope.
Okay.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Good night.